I'd like to call this meeting to order if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Any subtractions from the consent agenda? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
No vote.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Planning Commission report. Garth?
So last week we had a public hearing on some public housekeeping, uh, public ordinance, housekeeping stuff.
Okay, pages one through seven of your handout, everybody get a chance to look at that?
Yeah, it's just word exchanging a couple things, nothing major.
Uh, it's a little more clear on the piazza meters. Uh, a couple word changes there. Activation with a project has to be called out, things like that. You guys have looked at that and approved it? Okay, and you want to make a motion to adopt these
Make a motion to adopt ordinance changes?
Okay, is that ordinance number on that one, or?
I'm sure it's eighteen oh one.
Okay.
Number eighteen oh one.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on it? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Okay.
And then we had a public hearing for six five zero two West Broadway, variance request, and we continued discussion on that, the applicant wasn't there. And the Planning Commission felt like they liked to have the applicant present to ask questions.
Okay. You, uh, would you want to take this time to maybe, I think Danny, you didn't go there. Mark went there.
I did.
I went there, Bill went there, and did you go there Jeff? So we, four fifths of us have gone there. I don't know, Bill, you, what do you think on it?
Well, the variance is on the septic system, correct?
Right. Technically, that's all they're asking for.
Well, I mean, we were there together, that thing is in huge disarray.
It's, uh, public, uh, nuisance.
The house, I mean, I don't know where we go with all this, I mean, there should be some conditions on the septic system with the house in as bad a condition it is and the property, I would think. I mean, it'd be nice to know what their plans are.
You know, the, um, buyer has not been before the Planning Commission and has not been before the, um, at the counter neither. It's the buyer's agent that actually applied for the variance. So it's not the seller, it's not the realtor, it's not the property owner, it's the buyer's agent. And from what I understand from him is, um, it's an elderly couple who are now in a nursing home, three and a half hours north of here. They have not lived it in, in many years. And the new buyer wants to take down, according to him, the ugly part of the house. And, and, um, and rebuild it. So what I told them was, is I think they needed to have a conversation with Leon as to what it would take to bring the house up to code. And we talked about cleaning it up and the driveway issue and such. He was unaware of a driveway issue or any cleanup, so I think there was some
I don't think it meets our minimum driveway width, right now it's two ruts.
You know what I mean, it was
Through the swamp.
It was built in the fifties, so, um, back then it probably met code, today it doesn't meet the driveway code. So there's definitely things that need to be done in order to bring it up to code. My suggestion to Ryan was he bring his client to the city, talk to Leon to, to get exactly what is needed so that she's going in when she's buying it and she knows how much it's going to cost to bring it up to code.
Does that, go ahead Bill, go ahead Bill.
Has the buyer not been there?
He says they were both there in January.
There, the, I mean, the house, the, both the chimneys are coming away from the, the house, the, the roof is caving in in certain places. All the buildings are falling in.
Some of them don't have roofs, some have already fallen.
There's garbage, there's junk, there's, it's amazing the amount of stuff that's just back there, I mean, Dave and I were back there together. I mean, the one shed had mail in it from nineteen seventy-one. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's bad.
Like if they, if we grant the variance and, and then they're going to come looking for some, some extra hope for help for, I mean, unless somebody goes in there, cleans it all up and makes it livable, I guess I, I don't see why we would even bother with the variance.
Mr. Mayor and Council, a couple thoughts, one is you can condition the variance, so there can be reasonable conditions about how they have to bring the property up. Number two, since it has been a home site, even though it's
Abandoned.
abandoned, um, the question would be, is there reasonable use without the variance? So that's the question you have to ask yourself, but we can, we can address that when it comes back to you, um, from the Planning Commission, right? Because it's been continued.
Yeah.
Well, my, my point though is, is shouldn't we, if you're going to review this with the, uh, potential landowner, shouldn't we give them, give him some direction so he knows kind of where we're at with, hey, there's going to be these conditions with it?
Not until you hear what the recommendation of the Planning Commission is. So your job is to take the, to receive the recommendation of the Planning Commission and then, because you don't have all the facts in front of you without that.
So
So generally, generally, um, the process works that it comes, you know, as you know, from the Planning Commission to you with a specific recommendation. So, um, to give them direction now is kind of prejudging all those facts.
Okay.
And the variance process is, I mean, it's, it is what it is, I mean, I, I don't know what, what stop a variance from a septic system on a property that's had one and has been a livable house. You know, I mean, would, if the variance process takes place and we make a recommendation?
If you make a recommendation on zero to six inch separation?
Well, I don't think we want to make, well, for one, the Planning Commission, you know, I don't think anybody up there is an expert on zero to six inch separation.
Right.
You know, we had a letter in our packet from the building inspector saying that, you know, I didn't see anything wrong with where they wanted to put the septic. And there was a contractor that was willing to put it in there. So I don't really know how it could be denied by the normal process, you know?
So this particular design is a design we use when it's the, you know, I mean, it's the only, it's, it's a type three, it's the only option. If the variance is not granted, you've basically deemed the property unbuildable. So the twenty acres will be deemed unbuildable and you'd have to order it cleaned up.
Unless it was put in a different spot, there's other spots that could put that.
I did walk the property, there is some high ground out there.
Yeah.
Did you, you walked to the, back to the southwest?
Yeah, I walked everywhere you could except for the cattails, you know?
Yeah, Dave and I walked to the southwest past the old, old town barn.
Yep.
And it gets fairly high in there, that's a question I was going to ask. Where it looks like the septic is supposed to go is on the other side of the pine trees that are west of the house, when I was in there, it was all wet.
It was swamp.
It was water.
Yeah, standing water.
How, it's, it's not even above six inches of mottled soil, it's wet, it's cattails and swamp grass. So, but where, where we walked to, it got fairly high past the barn. So, I mean, we looked at it as, yeah, it has potential, the place has potential, but man, it's, it's a mess.
So I think that the key is, um, that issue of buildability and whether it can be improved so that it can be a home site. That's where you can impose conditions upon the grant of the variance if they bring the rest of it into conformance. And if they can't or they won't, then, then the variance is no good. Uh, but to turn down the variance says that then, then you've made a determination that it, that it's undevelopable and they have no reasonable use of the property.
Okay.
You know, the other thing is too, is that what the realtors telling the person who's buying it and what reality is, is if she was there in the winter time when everything was frozen, I think one of the council members was able to get it, be inside the house, and it's bad. And so, you know, once she gets back out there and maybe sits down with somebody who has the other side of the story, it might go a different direction, but they should be expected to.
I guess my, my point was, Mr. Giffith, is that if, if we give some just direction to the Planning Commission that, look, it, it's not just this focus that you need to look at here.
Sure.
And that's really what we're saying, is the, the whole site has to become compliant.
I can agree with that, I mean, do we make the conditions then, or do we just do?
You would make the conditions, I, I think that direction is appropriate, I think making any kind of prejudgment isn't
That's where I was going.
Exactly.
Okay.
So I think that works fine, and then the Planning Commission would come up with conditions related to the variance, related to conformance of the city code, making it payable. And then that would come back to you with a recommendation.
Right.
You know, the other thing too, like saves some time for the applicant if they knew what we're thinking, because if, if they do their deal and then it comes to us and then we bounce it back and, back and forth. I mean, I guess you're kind of getting the idea.
Yeah, well, I think the, hopefully it'll be at the next.
Yeah, I, I, and he did eventually get here, um, but he didn't have any information, he didn't have a wetland map. He didn't, he didn't have any more information than I did, which was basically nothing.
Well, we'll do that then, we'll, uh, hopefully get some feedback and what was some conditions.
Okay. Okay.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Have a good night. Okay, public open forum, is anyone here for public open forum? Let's get his hand up first.
This is Paul Peterson from the Cable Commission.
Just put your, write your name and rank. Serial number?
Peterson, very low rank. Here from Lake City TV, so about an hour ago, Cable Commission out there approved an estimate to put in your camera system. I brought you guys some copies if you want to take a look and if you have any questions, or?
Sure. Yep, a couple copies, or?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Basically just a remote control camera system, can capture it in the room, we can stream it from here. We'll have a separate audio control for the microphones.
Does it have captioning?
Does not have captioning.
Who controls the remote, remote control, one of your guys?
Yep.
Okay. Is it HD?
It is HD. The estimate in there is for four cameras, Jeff suggested three might be good enough, we'd do probably two in the back of the room, one with a wide shot, one we can zoom around and then one facing right towards this table from back there. I didn't know if you were okay with your overhead camera there, there's one in the estimate there that could be controlled by Elizabeth zoomed in and out if she wanted to. If it's not necessary, that's
One of the things we'd plan on doing is mounting some televisions in different areas, so it'd have an HDMI out for
Yep, and we'd have HDMI out for all that, yes.
That is not included.
I get that, but it has to have compatibility to hook to it. Okay, anything else on here that pops out? The streaming will then be through
Midco.
Uh, and it'll hit a server, someone's server, or?
Uh, I, I guess they have it wired out here already for it, but I can make it so we have some kind of feed that you can put on your website as well.
Okay.
So I can make sure that happens.
I know the ones that Forest Lake had, whenever they have an issue over there, it gets bottlenecked and doesn't work very well.
They kind, they have their own streaming service that isn't really us, they're just taking our feed and pumping it into their own thing. So there are ways we can take our feed and do a different type of streaming service for you that you can embed anywhere.
Okay, so we'll be able to, how about with the microphones? Are we looking at new microphones?
There's eleven new microphones on there.
Okay.
With a digital touch controller to control the volume that I believe Elizabeth has control over.
And are we paying half of the microphones?
I'm just paying for the microphones, yep.
Okay, and see it has
You guys have waited long enough, I could throw that in there.
As an SD card for, uh, capturing the video, audio?
So Elizabeth mentioned that she might want separate audio tracks from the mics.
Right.
Which isn't in the system, but it can be done just through software, so according to his bid, he's, there's enough in there that can send right to your server, so if she has software on her computer, it can go straight to there in multi-tracks. Otherwise, they'll just be a straight out SD card that when you're done, you walk out and put it in your
With the separate audio tracks as well?
The, the original one is not the separate audio track, that's just a mix down, if you want the separate, then it's a separate piece of software that you guys could get. He even mentions what it would be in here, but
Did you say that we could also install it ourselves or get somebody to install it?
This is, initially he gave me a bid for just the equipment, so if you have somebody here that you would want to install this, I can look into how that would change this offer.
Got forty-eight hundred dollars in there for that. And that just includes mounting the four cameras?
I think that's getting the whole thing up and running, so he, he came out here with me and I told him there's crawl space up in your ceiling, so it isn't that tough. And if we're just doing a couple cameras in the back here and there, probably isn't too bad.
Are you going to use our existing rack, or is this, or is there a rack in here?
I think he's going to use your existing rack because there was quite a bit of room in there, and then my plan was to take your big metal shelves and just push them to the right and then set up a table in the corner there for our little control booth.
Yeah.
And they approve this pending your approval.
Why not caption?
What's that?
You asked a question if they're allowed to.
I, I can look into that, I have not looked into that, so I think a lot of times there's an actual person typing that in, so I know I can't type that fast, but I can see if, I, I know YouTube does automatic captioning, it's, it's not always extremely accurate. But I can kind of look in to see what options are for that.
No, a lot of times there's some, uh, static captioning at the bottom, and then which would just say, you know, city hall meeting, blah, blah, blah.
Oh, just for like a graphic saying like what agenda, item?
Well, yeah, that is just as far as saying, you know, what you're watching. And then a lot of times there'll be a spot where
Yep.
At a certain angle, the camera will just change the name. You know, I don't know if the robot can discern that.
I don't know that, I, I am looking into with a separate computer, and I, from my understanding, it's not a very powerful computer. I'm looking into putting the graphics, so whoever's controlling it can automatically update whatever you want on the bottom of the screen and stuff.
Okay, so there are no, there are no speakers or anything on here, this is, so our same audio system?
Same audio, going right into your speaker system.
Yeah. Elizabeth, do you have anything to add?
Um, nothing to add, I think, I think you need software to add the subcaptions, captions into the audio.
A soundboard?
Into the, I think that's the way Forest Lake does it, they have this software that they load the agenda on, so, so, so what happens is, is when you're watching the video, if, if you want to, if you want to see item ten,
Mm-hmm.
you can go right to ten.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's on there, but I think they bought software to do that.
They do, they pay a, they pay a separate service to do all that.
But there might be something comparable to that nowadays.
Yeah, I will look into that, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
We were kind of hoping to get that.
Sure.
Okay, so what are you looking from us now, just to?
Uh, say yes please, I, I didn't notice on his bid until I was on my way here that he actually put a start date of June twenty-ninth on there, so I don't know if that works, somehow that works for you guys, but if you pick a time.
I, I don't know why that would be a problem to you, Elizabeth, is there any? Yeah, I almost think they should probably install it and set it up and make it go, rather than having somebody else do it, Jeff, it's
Excellent.
It's not that much money, I think it's, it looks like a reasonable price.
I had four different estimates, and that's half of what all of the others charged to put it in, so
Oh, that, it looks
Caption, how much would that be, you think? I mean, they let me have a camera off of this already, so we got a little, a little extra money.
Well, did we though? We didn't, for sure, you're going to try to do four, or what do you think?
I was going to do four, Jeff suggested three was fine, but
I don't know if you can go around with an extra camera. You're going to have one back here.
I'm going to have one back there, and initially it was either going to be three in the back, just two that can be close-ups, and then one's always a wide shot.
That sounds like the right way to do it.
Yep, so Forest Lake has them on the sides, so they can cross, but it's not really and they only have three, yep.
Three, well, they should have four.
Leave it up to Dave.
So, I guess it's you and I now.
The only reason that extra cam would be is say two of you on opposite sides are going back and forth for a while, that would, you'd have close-ups of you.
Right, and that never happens here. No, it looks, it looks good. And this company, you've vetted them out, they're good?
Uh, the company, they put in the system that's in Marinatha, and that's where I found out about them, so I went and toured that church
Mm-hmm.
And had the two people that run it out there kind of show me how the system all worked, and it seemed absolutely perfect. So then I reached out to this company and and I actually ran into the guy that runs the church again last weekend, and he said they're just a joy to work with, so
Okay. So they have a, a one by two HDMI distribution?
Sure.
Possible for that, to go to a one by four, one by?
I don't know what that is.
That's the HDMI, uh, distribution amplifier, so you got your final stream, it looks like they're splitting it out into two.
Okay.
So it's only a couple hundred dollars, that's where we would need to have like four
Oh, yes.
The HDMI, just so that
He knows that there's a possibility for that, so I know he was, I know he had that in his mind, if that has to be split more, you're saying?
Well, yeah, because it'd be nice just to have one splitter that
Sure, okay.
Handle it, and those, are those, um, so those would be HD, but will they be 4K HD?
I did not ask him for 4K, I can look into that.
All right, no, it looks good, I
I do know the board that this with, comes with looked completely different than the other boards we have, and so I kind of asked about that, and he said it's completely brand new, this whole system just updated everything. It's very, very digital, where the other ones are a little slightly more analog, so
I guess the only thing is then the captioning, and otherwise it looks good if you can
I will look into, that sounds like more of a software thing, so that shouldn't be too tough.
How many cameras are we at?
Four.
Okay.
And four is fine, I, I'm, I'm looking into putting a fourth one in Forest Lake, it's not necessary, but it's kind of handy.
Yeah.
Depending on, a lot of times you do have two people going back and forth for a while, and it just makes it kind of nice, so
Paul, changing the subject for a minute, why don't you tell us what you're doing at the high schools, we're, we're trying to get into high schools and stuff, so
I've been wanting that for a while.
So, one of my goals was to kind of partner with the high schools, or just the schools in general when I got here, and we've been working on that. So right now, the plan is they are going to build me a studio, and we are going, we're not going to move in there, but they're going to take three classrooms and we're going to rip some malls out, and I'm going to build a full studio in there. And we're going to start doing a lot of their daily announcements and stuff like that. We're also working on some curriculum, so I, I am not an accredited teacher, but they're pairing two to three teachers with me. And we're looking at a film class and a video journalism class, and possibly some motion graphics, animation classes that would all transfer into
How did all that happen to come about, I mean, we've been
I, I did a tour, when I first started, I did a tour with the principal, and I just kind of threw out there, you know, we should let us move in here, and he called me a couple months later, and that's just kind of how it started. And so I've been working with a group of kids there, about thirty kids, has a group called We Are Rangers, and it's about just, uh, including, you know, all different races and kids, there's a lot of bullying stuff going on, so we have this group just to kind of show everybody's the same, and that's how it started, and we're about to finish our seventh video for this group of kids, that we actually did a music video, the entire school's in it, we're going to debut that next Thursday in the theater, and
So you'd still keep your headquarters in Forest Lake then?
Still keep the headquarters and just the main offices in the senior center.
Okay.
And will probably be offices in wherever the studio is there. It's, it's next to the media center is, is the rooms they've designated for us.
Need another phone over there then, or?
Maybe.
Okay, then we just get another IP phone and stick it in there.
You wouldn't know that.
I would know that. All right, no, so, and you'll be streaming from there too?
We'll be streaming from there too, well, we're going to leave our whole system where it's at in the senior center. And because we control it all through browsers now, so that's, that's how it is. And the main offices will probably stay there, just because a lot of times we have shoots coming back nine, ten, eleven at night with gear. And we don't want issues getting in and out of the school with stuff like that, so
So, right now, the city is wired or fibered for, um, the connection to the high-speed, uh, link, but we, we really only have cable here.
Yep.
Is that going to be sufficient, or are we going to have to get that link?
That is sufficient, we had our annual Midco meeting last month, and what I got out of that meeting is they don't even, they don't have any channels they will give us in HD. So we don't get to go HD through
No, I mean, just for the streaming from here, so is that going to have to go over our existing?
According to Midco, that's set up and you're good to go. As long as they have, they have analog signals run, which they say are fine, the only, the only up and if we go digital, the only bonus we get is we gain control over which system or which signal we want to use, so right now Forest Lake is wired the same way. And so if they start, if you guys have meetings at the same time, we just have to pick who goes. If we went digital, we could literally from here shut theirs off and override it. The way it is, analog is just first come, first served, from what I understand, is the only difference.
Okay, um
My understanding is that we're only wired for analog.
Yep, you are wired for analog.
I thought we had fiber from them though. I mean, not, not our cable, not our internet connection, but our, there's dark fiber here?
I know, Jason told me you were wired for analog already, and if we wanted to go digital
They ran different lines, and the analog line is sitting in that room, coiled up in the corner. They ran a separate line for that.
Okay.
So as far as I know, I've talked to Midco, and they say we're good to go with the analog straight out of there, and they'll come work with whoever puts the system in and get it running, so
Okay. Because I, I thought we
It's a little beyond my
Yeah. Good, I, I mean, I thought we had dark fiber, which would be digital, but whatever, it just, you know, looks good. All right, so someone want to make a motion to, what are you doing here?
Make a motion to approve the, uh,
Installation?
Installation of, uh, each audio/video system?
Sure. Anyone want to second it?
Excuse me.
Get it out, Danny, all right, very good. Further discussion?
The fifty-three thousand that comes out of the Cable Commission budget.
Right, that's
Yep, we have peg fees put aside for that, and they're ready to go, so
Thank you.
Yep.
Why'd they add sales tax?
That will come off.
Okay, so it's really only forty-nine?
Yep.
Okay. All right, um, all right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thanks for coming tonight.
My pleasure.
Thanks, Paul. You hope.
All right, anyone else for public open forum? Come on up, write your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Terry Pittman, and I am from seventy-five eleven North Shore Circle North in Forest Lake. And I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the intersection at Camp Three Road and Kettle River Boulevard. Um, going back into your minutes over the last three years, I know this has been a topic that you've had according to your, your minutes. And on April first, my parents were involved in a car accident there, that, uh, um, there was two of them that day as a matter of fact, two hours before my parents, there was a three-vehicle crash there. And, uh, there was ambulance involved, people hauled away. Two hours later at six oh three, my parents were in an accident, uh, they were coming from the east, heading west on Camp Three Road and heading toward Potomac. Um, there was a vehicle coming south on Kettle River Boulevard that they did not see. Um, mother stopped, looked both ways, my parents are eighty years old. Um, perfect driving records, my mother's got no violations on her, on her name. Um, and, uh, pulls up and looks, did not see a vehicle, proceeded out into the intersection and slammed, had the accident. Um, visiting with the neighbors there on the corner at seventy-seven fifty-one Camp Three Road, the Granger family, they've indicated that there's been several accidents that they've witnessed there, involve an ambulance and bad scene. The end results of that day is, my mother was given citations as well, bad enough that there was an accident, and she didn't give up in the morning and say, I'm going to create an accident, it was an accident, she didn't see. And, uh, she was given a violation for, uh, um, for duty to drive with due care and speed greater than reasonable, and driver approaching an intersection and failing to yield the right of way. She did stop at the intersection, she proceeded through the intersection not seeing anybody. The same thing happened two hours before for that gentleman, who did the same thing, and his three kids were in his truck with him. The, what I guess I'm, I'm looking at as far as what, what can be done is, with all due respect to all the efforts that have been put in by you folks to try to improve this intersection, it, it still has some troubles. Um, I've read that you talked about maybe closing the road, you've talked about changing the speed limit, you've talked about signage in your minutes. you've talked about signage in your minutes. Um, traveling south on Kettle River Boulevard, there is no sign indicating that there's an intersection coming up around that curve. People that live here and know the area do probably know that there's intersection there, but there's a lot of people that travel that don't know that there's a intersection down there. Traveling at fifty-five miles an hour, and within a tenth of a mile of that intersection is a stop sign out on Lake Drive, I think it's fifty-five miles an hour is pretty excessive coming around that curve, and trying to get people safely across. Um, but then to turn around and have a deputy, who I believe is ticket happy, um, and given unnecessary tickets.
You know his name?
Tony Nelson, Officer Nelson. And, uh, um, he gave the other driver, uh, citations that day as well, um, both of them received. And after sitting yesterday in the courtroom with my mother, um, and her feeling very much like she was a criminal the way they treated her, uh, I thought it was pretty unnecessary, and then having to pay a two hundred dollar fine, um, the judge and the jury was the prosecuting attorney, they didn't get to see the judge, and, uh, there was no, no forgiveness, it was just going to be the way it was going to be. And, uh, my mother's been doing the main driving because my dad is dealing with cancer and heart issues, and this has really put a crimp on my mom wanting to get back in that car and drive, so it's kind of created a little bit of a problem for the family in trying to do that. And, uh, but my end results here today again is, I, I'm just hoping that something can be done to prevent further accidents or further injury at the intersection. Whether, you know, it's signage that's indicating, yes, there is that intersection, and as the citation says, it's, it's everyone's responsibility to drive to avoid collision or an accident. The person coming south, even though they have the right of way, just because they have the right of way doesn't give them the right to smash into somebody that's going through an intersection. We all have to slow down, we all have to be, you know, responsible drivers and be attentive to what is happening. And, uh, again, both of these drivers that day didn't plan on getting up in the morning on Easter Sunday and having an accident, and it wasn't unfortunate. But then to get citations on top of it, I think it's a little cold and stuff, so. That's what I have, I thank you for your time and listen, and hope that something can be done to improve that roadway.
Okay.
And you hired an attorney, and you thought the prosecutor wouldn't do anything for you?
We hired an attorney as well, and it wasn't good. The prosecuting attorney, she was heartless, if you ask me, I mean, she just wasn't going to budge.
He was a prosecutor for the city?
Yeah, that's what I said.
It was, it's, our prosecutor's not a female.
Well, her name is Dawn Stells, and my understanding is she's your new prosecuting attorney for the city. That's my understanding.
I know, I know, this is not, our prosecutor is, uh, what's his?
Joe Murphy.
Yeah, and I told Joe, and he said that he's not anymore. I tried to visit with him on the phone before, and he says, no, you got to call this law firm, it was an outfit in Brooklyn Park or Brooklyn Center.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Elizabeth?
I'll have to make a phone call.
Wow, yeah, we, we will look into that.
I'm, I'm not aware of any.
And that's who we were visiting with yesterday, and she.
What law firm was she with?
And I'm sorry, I don't have that with me. Um, I could go out and grab my cellphone and give you the name of it, I, I do have it on my cellphone, I have her picture as well.
Okay.
And, uh, I could bring that back in.
I would want to know who prosecuted that, if it's, it's a, in our city jurisdiction, it should be our prosecutor.
It may be, um, sometimes they'll have cooperating agreements where if someone's got a conflict, another prosecutor will pick it up.
I get that.
Yeah, so, we can look into that, um, obviously the council doesn't address prosecutions, other than to hire the prosecutor, so.
Well, if we hired somebody and they're not doing their job, that's our review, though.
Yeah.
I mean, I can see in, in both of these cases, in, in any accident, if you've got someone who's a violator, he, they're a problem, they've got other convictions, et cetera, these are times to use to give tickets. But you're already in a bad situation, no one planning on totaling the vehicle. You got deductibles, you got tickets, you got all that, and it, I, I think it, like I say, it, it's, it's an unfortunate event for everybody, and we're in a bad intersection besides.
Yeah, and we're, we're trying to get that addressed, there's not a lot of real good solutions, but we're working with the county.
I thank you.
Yep, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public open forum? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, the Lackner's Woodland Ponds request. Pages ten and eleven. Welcome, state your name. Are you Tom?
Yeah.
Your address is?
One five 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 four Zodiac.
Thank you. Okay, Elizabeth, you want to frame this up?
Lackners, um, submitted a preliminary plat several months ago, and wanting to subdivide their property, so it's a one, one new lot in this particular subdivision. When we talked about the subdivision in this particular case, the right of way within their plat, um, goes to the middle of the road. And when you subdivide property, and your property crosses a public right of way, the issue is that you have to improve it. In this particular case, again, it's half a right of way, and in the past, we have asked that they give the city an escrow for the amount of that improvement, should that improvement happen. And in this particular case, um, we don't have, this road's not on the schedule to be improved, and so I indicated to Mr. Lackner that he would have to put in an escrow. When we asked what the amount of the escrow was going to be, we came up with an amount of fifteen thousand dollars. And unfortunately, I had the pleasure to inform the Lackners that that would be the case, and then they had indicated to me that this would be beyond their budget. So they're here before you today to ask you to have a developers agreement or agreement drawn up, so that they could, they understand they need to put the escrow, they understand they need to pay for their portion of the road, um, but whether or not they could put that money in escrow when the lot was sold, or sometime in the future.
Is that pretty accurate to?
That's perfect, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we've done this at least in a couple of cases where, uh, we have a specific, um, agreement with the landowner that, uh, they will pay the, um, cost upon receiving proceeds from the land sale. It's filed of records, so any buyer knows that it's there.
The title search will pull it up?
Title search will pull it up, and then in the event that somehow it's missed and doesn't get paid, then there's an assessment against the property, so. Um, that's a device we've used where there's hardship, and, um, this may be one of those situations.
Yeah, that seems reasonable to me, what do you guys think?
Definitely.
Any concerns or? Could someone make a motion to, uh, stay the, or what would you call that, Bill?
It would essentially be an escrow agreement, kind of a deferred escrow.
Enter into an escrow agreement?
Right.
Anyone?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, further discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, there you go, thanks for coming tonight.
What, as far as, um, drawing this agreement out, how does that work?
Um, Bill, who would, does he have to do that, do you have one you can just throw over?
We would draft the agreement, you would be charged for it.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Alright, next up, Washington County Comprehensive Plan. Um, Elizabeth, we discussed this a little bit, um, did you hand out my maps, or did you make my maps?
I did, I did not.
Okay.
Make copies, I'm going to put them on the overhead.
Yeah, you got one? That's, that's my point, so, we review everybody else's comp plan like everyone else reviews ours, and in the Washington County Comp Plan, it doesn't, it, we, I think we should comment on where we believe the interchange should be for, um, a new interchange to alleviate some congestion in the, uh, lower quadrant of the.
You're talking the new proposed idea of the new.
Yeah, so, this is, this is a, a plan here, um, the, the red line, and Elizabeth, you put the other one on there, can you put the other one next to it? I know it might not match up perfect, but they'll get the idea. It's kind of important, there you go. Okay, so the red line is the, what, Washington County, Anoka County, Hugo, Lino Lakes, everyone has in their comprehensive plan. And the problem with that is, if you look at the, the red area, the, the red spot over here, I mean, there's no developable land here, or here, or here, um, all it is, is, is swamps, and this crossing here, I believe, Elizabeth, you had a, did you have a chance to ask Race Creek about that?
You know, I saw a reporter look it up yesterday, and he said that, you know, going through that area would be somewhat difficult, but he, they would need more, they would need a feasibility study or something to show that.
Yeah, so our contention is, is this, because of its, uh, extensive wetland use, utilization here, would be almost, I mean, twenty, thirty years out. Um, we could definitely, uh, if this, this is where the asphalt plant is going to be, this is actually the four corners of, um, Hugo, Forest Lake, Columbus, and Lino. So this is Lino, this is Columbus, so this interchange here, um, the green line would be, uh, shows here that you get off going like this, you could either go up on fifty-four into Columbus, cross and go up on a new road that's going to be here, and hit Columbus or Forest Lake, um, hit the Hugo area. Uh, this would be, uh, an exit here to, to go to Columbus, or, I mean, this would basically be a whole new area that has highlands all around it for the most part, and, and, uh, we want, just to make a note that we don't agree, I don't know, Elizabeth, you'd say just, not that we, we don't agree with the hundred and seventieth plan, or we, we prefer.
I think you want to put in maybe an or, or you want them to explore other, other possibilities?
We wanted, we want this green line included in their plan as an option, not necessarily saying, oh, that's the one, but just, it's a, we want this or that, so that when comes time to get funding, we can, uh, choose the cheaper one, which is going to be the green line.
So I, I think, Mr. Mayor, on page fourteen, it would say at one hundred and seventieth street alignment, and then you would add or one hundred, one hundred and eightieth street, is that right?
Yeah.
Alignment?
Yep.
So it'd be the two options.
And I almost think, um, we may want to include this, uh, drawing maybe, but we're looking at potentially at a roundabout here and a roundabout here, so there would be no stop signal, there'd be no signals there at all, it'd just be a, um, uh, because it's a lot less expensive, so. Um, could we include this as a concept plan?
Yeah, we've got comments on page fourteen from the city planner, and we can, um, add that to the bullet point that addresses alignment.
Okay.
If the council directs it, we would need a direction.
A direction, a motion?
Yeah, it should be in the form of a motion.
Okay. And then, anyone want to make a motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to ask a few questions.
Sure, go ahead.
I was over on one hundred and eightieth, how much is one hundred and eightieth where it ends from Columbus property?
Right here, about.
There's no road from there to the freeway, though?
No, it's, it's dirt road, it's, it's nothing, it's empty.
Just field.
Fields, cheapest, cheapest place to put a road, on a field.
But the other one's got a road through it already.
This one has a road to it, it has a bridge that's fifty years old, ready to be replaced. Um, it has, uh, i- if it was put here, that bridge would last a lot longer, and would be a backup to the other one.
I would go along with this if, if you still leave both ideas in the, in the comp.
Well, we definitely would want them both there, in case, I mean, if they have the money to do all this, and can get all that done in a reasonable time, great, but.
I can't see, uh, going on a piece of property that we don't have a road, it, it's buying for the future, I know, but I'd like, like to have the other one still on the option.
Sure, yep, and that's, that would be our intention with the motion.
If Washington County doesn't even want to consider that, it's their comp plan, would they just leave it out then?
Well, they didn't even know about it, because this just came up.
Right.
This just came up, probably about two months ago, we had our first meeting with Forest Lake on that, so that there, this is kind of new to them, too.
And just like you circulate, excuse me, just as you circulate your comp plan to other agencies and, and adjoining, uh, governments, they have this requirement to get your comments, if any.
Right.
Doesn't mean necessarily that they're going to change anything, it's just, it's.
Yep, so we, I want to respond with this comment.
So this will be in all comp plan also?
I believe so.
If we direct it to the V?
Yep.
Okay.
So then, they would, we put, we would put our recommendations in our comp plan for.
One eightieth?
On ramps and the off ramps, off thirty-five W.
On fifty-four up here, and on, on this interchange.
Right, because we don't believe it's ever going to go there.
Well, it's not only that it's not going to go there, but this is way more beneficial to Columbus and Forest Lake. So I mean, Lino Lakes and Hugo benefit huge from this, but we would benefit even more from this, uh, multi-jurisdictional interchange. It's not that far away.
So we will still put both those things in our comp plan?
Right, but we'll just put the one hundred and eightieth first, whatever.
Well, no, not the one hundred and seventieth, we're going to put the one hundred and eightieth in, in the on ramp and off ramp.
Yeah.
And this comment is a comment to their document, so it doesn't, it doesn't say necessarily what goes in your comp plan, that's still yet to come.
Yeah, but I mean, obviously, if we're asking Washington, we're, we're on the same path.
Right.
So, someone want to make a motion to that effect? I'll make a motion to that effect, do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay, we have a second, let's talk. Bill, a second, and anyone want to discuss anything else on it?
You wanted to see an interchange on a freeway and fifty-four?
Well, this would be a half interchange here, so if you're going north on thirty-five W, you could get off onto fifty-four. Actually, it's a sweeping get off right here, it's kind of hard to see, but it's a turn to get off here, and then you can go up to fifty-four, or you can go to, uh, over to Forest Lake, cross this new bridge. If you're coming south, um, you, you can, oh, no, you, you can get on here to go, this is a half interchange, so this is just two ramps to an existing bridge.
You can really go south off fifty-four.
You can go south off fifty-four, but, and going north, you can get off, but you couldn't go north, because if you wanted to go north, you'd just come down here and go north right here. See that?
Mm-hmm.
Because you're going to merge together in your, up here anyways, so we don't need on ramps this way, and an off ramp this way.
Well, it won't hurt anything to put it in the comp plan.
No, I don't think so. Okay, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed? Okay, the ayes have it.
So that'll be added to the comp.
Okay, anything else in this Washington County? Thing anybody brought up? Okay, so that'll be our only comment. Okay, um, next up is the engineer's report.
So the first item I had was in front of you is a resolution that would authorize engineering to prepare a feasibility report for extending, uh, city utilities, sanitary sewer, and water main into the northeast quadrant of, uh, ninety-seven and thirty-five. Um, reason we're going through the resolution process is that this would be, um, a project that would be assessed to the future development.
Okay.
Developer in that area.
Alright, uh, anyone want to make a motion to adopt Resolution eighteen oh two?
I'll make a resolution, adopt eighteen oh two.
Thirteen, oh, what happened there?
The first one was an ordinance.
Oh, thirteen.
Do you want to make your, uh, uh, motion?
I'll make a motion, adopt Resolution eighteen dash thirteen.
Second.
Okay, any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye? Aye, opposed?
Nay.
One nay, the ayes have it. Okay?
Um, the next item I had was just a general update on the I thirty-five ninety-seven project, and obviously, you know, there's, um, work going on thirty-five by the traffic that's out there, and it, um, there's also, um, you can sign up and get automated updates from MinDOT's website on closures that are coming up. Couple of the points I wanted to make were, um, as part of the Hornsby Street realignment project that we will be kicking off next week with the county, I mentioned before, it has been determined that the signal at ninety-seven and Hornsby will be part of that project. There will also be some lane improvements on ninety-seven going east of that signalized intersection, that'll also be part of the city project. Um, and I can come back at another time and, and talk more about the funding scenarios, but.
Okay.
For the most part, it's through different sources, and most of it's covered.
Okay.
The last item I wanted to mention as a reminder is that last, late last fall, we talked about closing Hornsby as part of all the traffic and the, the badge plant, so that is the plan, and we were proceeding with doing that. Um, getting signage set up, um, to be closed May twenty-first, Monday. And again, the reason for that was, um, Schaefer has their badge plant there, there's going to be four hundred plus truck trips a day. Um, when our project, uh, for Hornsby and utilities takes place next year, um, that'll be digging up, uh, Hornsby. And, um, I know JW's mentioned too, that just extra truck traffic, um, from the badge plant is, uh, creating more maintenance.
Yeah.
But, um.
Go on record as saying I disagree with this, but I. It's going on record as saying I disagree with this, but I was outvoted, so.
I would like to maybe mention, though, we talked about closing of it, but maybe after rural construction ends in the fall, then reopen it back up.
I was on the failing side of that motion, so I don't really have much to say.
That badge plant is pretty big. There's a lot of stuff going on down there. I don't think it's a bad idea.
Okay, I just, I think the way we did it without consulting with Forest Lake is probably not the right thing to do, but it is what it is.
We have been in contact with Forest Lake Engineering and Administration, and MinDOT for 97, and Washington County, which 11th is a...
And you also coordinated with the fire department and the rescue people and the...
Yep.
Okay.
We still need to do that yet.
Okay, I'd recommend it.
Just wanted to let you know that you should see signs out next week that would indicate it's closing in another week, and then it would close on the morning of the 21st.
Okay, and so everybody who accesses the lake will just have to do it from the north?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
And that's all they have.
Anything else? That's it. When it comes to, what's happening already with just a little bit of construction is everybody's getting off on 23, coming through Lino, and backing up 23, and then I'm guessing they're going up Kettle River, because they don't want to go to 97, because that's not far enough. So they're going down the intersection that I think they go through, they do, they go through Camp 3, don't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so they're making that interchange even worse, and then they're getting up to the roundabout and zipping over, they're going through the roundabout, going north up to Wyoming. But I do think we need to do something with that intersection. I've said a long time ago that it, I know, I don't, I know, Jeff, you wanted to look at stop signs, bigger stop signs or whatever?
Flashing.
Flashing, that's not the problem. The problem is, is the, and Dennis, you can maybe address this, is the fact that the road's not perpendicular.
That is part of the problem.
Yeah, well, I think it's most of the problem. And if the road was, just even the approach for the first car was, was oriented with a median to force it a, you know, perpendicular yourself to the road, I think that could eliminate, eliminate that issue.
Why don't we go one step further and close it?
Close Camp 3?
Just that one section between there and Lake Drive. Why don't you go up to the next spot, just another three, four blocks up and turn your there, and then...
That doesn't, all that does is add more traffic down to that other interchange. It's a, I think we should look at just what it would take to do a simple modification to orient the car straight, because when I pull up to that intersection, I don't go straight and end up at an angle. I pull up and turn, so I'm perpendicular. I look out both windows, my, the posts, the passenger posts are not in the way when you do that. And I think that's a simple solution. I don't know if we have, it's our street, so it would be us probably looking at it versus the county, but I don't know if you could ask the county, or if...
There's a lot of foliage there, though, too.
That's another problem.
If you're going north going south, he's, he's right, it's camouflage.
It should, a sign that says blind intersection ahead might help.
But there's a lot of trees, and a lot of stuff on that corner.
I agree, and I think it should be looked at, and...
It's not lined up squarely.
I think Dennis, I would be, would it be you, or JW, would be you to have, to look at what options we have there as far as 50?
It's actually a county intersection.
Not...
Even though it's ours' green.
Oh, yeah.
It's a county right-of-way. So, I mean, I don't think we can make improvements in there right-of-way.
We can talk to, I mean, if there's foliage in the county road, right-of-way, we can talk to them about clearing out some more.
Well, when you look, when you pull that intersection, you look south, there's a bunch of foliage there. I mean, it's tough, you have to really sneak your nose out, especially if you're driving something bigger.
Right.
And then, then, like you say, you're not square to the road, so when you look to the north, it's...
The post.
Yeah, you got to really watch.
There's one other avenue I could explore, and it's temporary, but MinDOT had a funding source for roadways adjacent to the design-build project that might be impacted. And I don't know if anybody thought...
This is impacted, yeah. Maybe we get some money.
At least a check.
That's a good idea. Really good idea.
Dave's right, there's an excessive amount of traffic around about on Kettle River Boulevard.
Yeah, it's all coming from...
The last week, if you hit it the right time, and they're all coming, you have to sit on Broadway and wait.
Try taking a left turn right here. It's good.
It's a little tougher. They're, they're not going down the highway, avoid the highway.
Avoiding the freeway.
No.
I did call the county, asked a question from the last meeting, and they did indicated that they would send out a crew to clear, you know, Kettle River Boulevard, and Jim agreed to do Camp 3, clear out Camp 3 in that particular area. But further than that, Jane, when I talked to Jane Rose, she said she wanted to know from the council, long-term plan, because their suggestion for a long-term plan...
Was a roundabout.
Is a roundabout at Lake Drive and Kettle River, and closing short Camp 3. So there would no longer be a short road from Kettle River to Lake Drive. That would become a cul-de-sac, or they would turn back, or we would turn back the, the road right-of-way.
But Glenn Miles gets his access off that road. Would just be a stub road, a dead end.
Well, he would, right, his drive, you know, it would be his driveway, but it would be, it would be a cul-de-sac, basically, depending on where you wanted it ended. You could, you know, end it, because it is a local road.
Where would he access off, Lake Drive or...
Probably Camp 3.
No, he would, he was, his driveway would say on Camp 3, it would just be a local road.
Doesn't, it doesn't fix that interchange.
And it doesn't.
So that's why I think they should look a little further at that. I mean, there's, there's options there that, it needs to be brought to the table, so that we can all have some input on what we'd like to see there, so instead of just one county guy saying, let's do this. I think if, if we could ask them about some sort of modification, I mean, they do this in, in the, in cities where they put these center medians in the middle of intersections to make people slow down and go around them. I mean, basically, it's a curb that you use for aligning traffic. I don't know why something like that wouldn't be better than...
I'll also check with our traffic engineers to see if they're aware of any other similar scenarios.
Okay.
That have a road ask you.
Good. I mean, it may cost us $10,000, $15,000, $20,000, but I think it needs to be addressed. I think that's what we're here for, so. I think the guy coming up here tonight. All right, so Dennis, you'll check into that? And ask the county? All right, anything else from you? Nothing? Okay, attorney's report?
Mr. Mayor and Council, the first item is the Vituaminus Roadways Development Agreement. On page 2 of the agreement, we now have SAC information, so I'll just, if you want to write these numbers in for the approval of the agreement tonight. The city service charge, which will be based on two SAC, would be $886. The city water availability, availability charge is already in there at $221,900. The Metropolitan Council Service Availability Charge, or SAC, would be $4,970, for a total of $227,756. So with that, the document is complete and ready for your approval tonight. We will work with the developer to get the exhibits finalized and get the document recorded once you approve it.
Okay, so staff has fully reviewed this, and the park fund payment thing is Xed out? Do you have a number on that one?
They were actually applying laws, not creating laws.
Oh, okay, so that's...
So the park fee is not, does not apply.
Not appropriate. You'd always put some in there if you wanted to. All right. Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve or deny the developer's agreement.
So moved.
Which, approve or deny?
To approve.
Okay, do we have a second? Second, Danny? Okay, further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye, posed. Ayes have it.
The next item, Mr. Mayor, is the ACIS Hotel Development Agreement. This is, well, called mostly done, so we're going to have you approve it if you are comfortable with the ability to just make some final adjustments. The, the major change that I would point out is on page 5, and that's, we have, in some discussion with the developer, determined that we will delete the surety for improvements, mainly because there are no city improvements on the ACIS Hotel property, it's all private improvements. There are some changes to stormwater ponding, which will be approved through Rice Creek, and the developer has provided a copy of that surety. And in, like the prior agreement, the park fund would be zero in this case.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they already contribute quite a bit to that fund as it stands.
Exactly. So with that, we'd ask you to approve the ACIS Hotel Development Agreement with the ability for staff to complete and finalize that agreement with the exhibits and non-substantive changes as addressed.
Okay.
So moved.
That'll work. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye, posed. Unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, for your information, and the council's information, there's a response letter from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources to the letter that the council approved. You were not at the meeting, so it went out with Mr. Derain's signature as deputy mayor. This relates to the sanctuary at Howard Lake. We are in discussions with the developer and DNR about hopefully modest changes to that project that might gain the approval of the DNR, not that they have approval rights, but they've expressed concerns. And so what we've done is we've entered into a 30-day stipulation to sit down with the developer and the DNR to see if some changes to that project might come closer to the kind of full compliance with the DNR rules. Remember that the council granted a variance, because the development project was not viable without variances to some of the setback requirements. The DNR said they would challenge that, and so we thought, rather than getting into a legal challenge with the DNR, we would sit down and see if we could work through some of those issues. We've met with the DNR once, we've met with the developer once, and Friday we'll meet all parties at the DNR. So we'll see how that goes. It will require some compromise by both parties, the DNR and the developer.
Did Tom Landhurst say he's going to be at that meeting?
Pardon me?
Was the director going to be at that meeting?
I don't think so. I think he's, he was at the first meeting at the request of the city.
Yeah.
So we met with the commissioner of the Department of Natural Resources, he's turned it over to his general counsel for this meeting.
Okay. You guys have any questions on that? I was at the meeting, ask what the deal is.
I was looking at theirs, it's 150-foot ordinary high water level.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, 150...
50 feet from the high water level, which is 300 feet into the buffer zone, but okay.
I didn't know it was that much.
Yeah, the, most of the, I mean, I think this may be the only natural environment lake located in the Seven County area where there's sewer and water, and so we explained that the, the city's desire to develop on the public sewer and water runs in, you know, direct conflict with their very strict rules around natural environment lakes, and that's why the council granted a variance. So we have competing direction from the Met Council to develop at higher densities, and with the DNR's directive to, you know, pretty much not develop this property. So that's obviously not acceptable to the city, and we communicated that, but we are willing to sit down and, and see if we can't work on a compromise.
So at this point, there's an agreement to stay a lawsuit 30 days?
Yes.
Till something can maybe be reached. Any other questions? Okay, anything else, Mr. Griffith?
That's all I have.
Okay. Counsel report. First off, Sunrise Public, who's the Sunrise guy? All right, Danny, you go first and bring her up.
In your booklet, in your pamphlet, there's an invitation to, for the May 17th to, you get to see the carp, carp barriers, if you take this tour, leaving the senior center in Coon Lake.
I didn't see anywhere, anywhere they're going to tour the plugged-up ditches on the north end of Columbia.
That's, we could, and your council member, your senator is going to be there.
Which one?
Bar, was that I say?
Yeah, Bar.
He was supposed, he was supposed to be there, Bill, so you should come.
I can call him.
Okay. But if anybody wants to go, know, go, just let us know, and we can get your reservation.
Okay.
It's free.
Yeah, no, it's not, it cost me a lot of time.
Well, time's time, you know.
All right, have you got anything else for us?
All I got.
Mark?
I'm at a park board meeting. They decided to close down the park on Howard Lake Drive.
Nice.
The person who wanted to keep it open, she didn't do any homework, or didn't ask, didn't do a survey, nothing. So there's no response, so it's just best interest that you close it down. And then JW went and had a class on making the playground ADA compliant, so they're going to start working on that, so they're going to put some handicap stalls in the, the parking lot, and then pave it to the playground set, and then to the pavilion.
Okay.
So they're going to start going on that. And that's all we have.
We had a question for, if they close it down, what will happen to the property, you know?
I think it's going to have to see the city, don't they have the option to give it back to whoever donated it, or the city's going to keep it? I think we talked about, we didn't want to give it to the DNR last time we had this discussion a while back, so we're going to hang on to it, maybe use it for future...
Maybe we could use it for wetland credits, a day or out.
That's what I'm saying, we're going to hang on to it for wetland credits for something.
We could use the dirt right along Howard Lake Drive to make it safe.
All the facilities are going to be removed, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, everything's going to be removed.
And quit being mowed?
Quit being mowed, they're just going to let it go back to nature.
Okay. And they told the neighbor?
That has not been addressed yet.
Probably.
We'll find out. Find out when the stuff's gone.
Yeah, the council has to order that, don't they?
Yeah, I would think so.
I would think so, too.
Okay, so, so you asking for that direction, or are you going to come to a formal motion?
Well, it's been approved by the city, so it's, we put it up for a motion, I suppose.
Okay. So we want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to close the park on Howard Lake Drive.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? What about the stop sign, would that...
That's going to get pulled.
Okay.
What I mean, the yield?
The yield sign.
That's going to get pulled out, and are you going to possibly put the lights over at the other intersection? We're going to do some checking on that, the flashers.
Yeah, what other intersection?
Camp 3. Camp 3. We have them there.
We don't have flashing lights at that, oh, I guess we do.
Yeah, we do, for the pedestrian walk.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, posed. Okay, anything else, Mark?
No, I'm still...
Jeff?
Cable commission meeting was the night Paul was here.
Yeah.
It was feels, so I don't have anything.
Stole your thunder, didn't he?
That's all right.
I've got a question, Jeff, is Scandia still out?
Oh, I could mention that, Scandia is, is going to be officially out the end of June.
Okay.
They're going to do a pay-per-meeting, I think, but then they can't get any of that equipment like we got and stuff, so...
Pay-per-meeting?
They're going to pay somebody to come film their meetings.
Oh, go à la carte. Okay.
So keep their cable commission fees, but they'll pay for...
They'll pay for meetings, I think it's, I think it's $5,500 for the year. Yeah, $5,500 for a year to film them. They won't get anything else filmed, and it won't be broadcast on, on the local channel either. So it's just for the library, I guess.
I think they can put them on their website.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Grabs?
I have nothing.
Okay, I have nothing. Public Works Report, JW?
No report.
Public Information Coordinator Report?
No.
City Administrator Report?
No report.
Wow. Okay, Planning Commission meets on the 16th, is that correct still?
Yes.
Okay, and calendar meetings on page 31. I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, adjourn.